Good morning, everybody. Thank you for being here today. I'm going to call this meeting to order at exactly 8 o'clock. Okay, if we could all start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Public Comments, and we have several people that would like to speak today. We don't have anybody on Zoom that wants to speak?
I haven't asked, but I will.
Okay. Meanwhile, I will ask Mary Gannaway to come and speak, please. Oh, yes, we do have, I wasn't going to read this again because most of you were here last time, but just in case, please remember to introduce yourself. Please be brief and try not to repeat yourself for the sake of making sure we can have enough time for everybody to speak and present. We know discussions, our school-related issues, can get emotional, but please remember that our children are watching, and we're all neighbors and community members, so please be civil. We're not going to permit profanity or shouting at one another or comments that disparage and attack individuals or group of individuals. Speakers should direct all comments to the committee. It's an opportunity for committee to hear the opinions of the public that relate to school and educational matters. It is not a public debate or conversation, so no questions should be directed to the committee, and we will not be responding to any questions if they are asked. We just want to listen and take in what you have to say and your thoughts. The committee will not permit complaints or allegations against staff members. These are personnel matters which the board, which the committee is not permitted to hear in public. If there are any complaints against staff, these have to be handled appropriately through our complaint procedure, and we have three minutes for everybody. Thank you. Okay, sorry. Go ahead, Mary.
Okay. My name is Mary Gannaway, and I thank you for listening to me again. My husband emailed you yesterday, asking you not to pull the plug on a program that promotes academics and mental health. I told him in every classroom, "We review the core values." So we ask you to be compassionate and responsible and keep the ALT program and have the courage to trust the citizens of Sanford to fund this program. We are curious as to how much the program will raise our taxes, so we will try to meet with Mr. Bach, the city manager, today to ask him. These children are the seeds of our community and are well worthy of this innovative program. Now, as I look at this panel, I've had two of you in school, and some of you go to my church, and I know you very well, and I know you're very intelligent, and I know that you have skills in brainstorming. If you can't put this program forward the way it is, which we should do, I would ask you to do some brainstorming and see if you can find some, well, I'm a music teacher, so maybe Mrs. Webb could be the theme, and there could be a variation on the program. Because I would love to see these children out of bed. I would love to see these children connected with other human beings. An idea that I had is perhaps to have Mrs. Webb, English teacher extraordinary, be the main teacher, and perhaps in EdTech oversee online learning in science and math. I'd keep my certification up in music. I would volunteer to go and help them earn their performing arts requirements. So that could be divided into four groups, so there'd be about seven in each group. Okay, so I want to thank you for your consideration and your time again, and I trust you.
Thank you, Mary. Stephanie Joplin.
I'm just going to say one thing. There's a new fancy timer right there. If you don't mind switching it over, it was a lot of effort to get that here, so I would appreciate it if you would flip it over to give you a visual of where the time is at. Thank you.
Well, we also didn't like the creepy sound you had for your timer.
It's now been changed. I didn't know how to change it.
I mean, it sounded like there was an atomic bomb going off or something. I'm actually going to be reading a letter from the school psychologist, Rebecca, I apologize if I get her names wrong, Labor Smith. She's, it's the same that she's already sent to Matt, but she wanted to be here, but of course, she's at school right now. "I'm writing today on behalf of the SHS Alternative Education Program. I'm honestly shocked by the need to write this letter because it never occurred to me that this valuable part of our school community would be facing possible elimination. Students who thrive in the ALT school typically have a long history of struggling elsewhere despite numerous and varied interventions. Many have failed academically in traditional learning environments. Most have failed to make friends or feel included in group activities. Interventions such as Title I support, 504 plans, referral to special education, RTI, school staffing, counseling support, et cetera, have typically been attempted and been ineffective prior to consideration for the alternative program. Anyone who visits the Sanford High School Alt School will recognize that it is the continuity of staff and students and the ability to work together all day, every day, that fosters a predictable therapeutic environment for some of our most anxious students. The idea that a school psychologist, school social worker, or school counselor could supplant this environment is ludicrous. While our services are important, they're brief, one-on-one, and outside of the classroom setting. What our alternative education teachers provide is a highly structured, reliable, consistent group environment where their students' emotional needs can be addressed in equal measure to their unique learning styles. There is no other environment comparable to this within our Sanford public schools. I urge you to fully consider the ramifications, not only for our current students, but for the generations of students to come, prior to eliminating the most important, this most important resource within our Sanford school community." On a personal note, I know I'm nobody. I only have so much power here, but I can promise you this, myself and everybody that's been involved in trying to fight this would put just as much effort into helping you with the city council and with getting people to come out and vote yes for the budget. If you did all the cuts that you needed to do, because we know you have to make more, and you kept ALT, we would rally behind you so hard, like 10 times as much. Personally, I can't wait till you guys never have to hear my name again, because this is not my expertise, but fighting for my kid is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Steph.
Paula, I know it's not normal to go back and forth, and I'm not looking to go back and forth, but Stephanie, I, please don't ever say that you are a nobody, because you're not, and the prior meeting you said you're just a mom. You're more than that, so just remind yourself all of the time of that.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Get my cough out first. "Good morning. My name is Pam Cody, and I worked in Sanford Schools for 15 years. Ooh, I've never sat in this seat and not cried, and I didn't think I was going to today, and here it comes."
Just for a second, can you move the microphone up a little?
Okay. I'm not going to repeat that crying scene, though. Okay. Time is ticking. "I worked in adult and family literacy programming with high school students with the ELO program, and then, of course, as a middle school teacher. While working in adult ed and at the high school, I interacted with ALT ed learners. As a matter of fact, Haley, whose email was read the other night, was one of the first ELO students. I am very concerned about the removal of this program, and while I outlined my concerns in detail over two emails, I felt compelled to come today to speak. We all know that removing the ALT ed program means that a portion of our students will leave our school system before obtaining their high school credential, and we will feel the direct impact of this in our community. There are substantial costs when a student discontinues their education, costs at the community, state, and national level. Please consider that the ALT ed program was established well before the turbulence of COVID-19 and its associated funding and now loss. I don't think it is sound practice to move grant-funded positions into a regular budget while cutting a long-established program. It is very difficult to get programming such as this back, and you will want it back at some point, or a future school committee will. In addition, non-wrapped services or pull-out services can be problematic. In my experience, and this is just my experience of teaching for several years, the loss of learning for pull-out services can have significant impact on academic and academics and on a social, emotional level. I understand we need these services in some form at some level, but this is not the swap. Research actually states that when students' needs are met through systemic student support and wrapped around services, they are better equipped to engage positively at school, which leads to increased effort, increased social, emotional, and academic skill, and then, of course, achievement. So high-quality student support systems like ALT ed lead to benefits in students that persist long-term into adulthood, and persistence is a key word in that statement. I heard someone say this week, "We need to help every learner walk through the door," and this was related to the national literacy crisis in the U.S., but when I heard that statement sitting in DC, it hit me so hard, and I was so distracted. As I thought of the community I live in, it's so hard for some of our learners to walk through the door. Sorry, this is a former adult ed teacher now, and we understand this. If we've had personal experience within ourselves, with a child or as a teacher. Years ago, when I was interviewing to work at Sanford Adult Ed, there was a framed quote sitting in the tiny office at Lincoln School, and it captured so well the courage that many of our learners need to persevere. I'm almost done. It said, "The jump is so frightening. Between where I am and where I want to be, because of all I may become, I will close my eyes and leap." And I printed this, and I've kept it with me through all my years of teaching, at times sharing it with students. It sits on my desk, actually, at home. These students are taking that leap every day when they walk through the school door, and we need to help them do that. Thank you for serving on the school committee. I know how hard your job is.
Thank you, Pam.
Sorry. The ALT school is fundamental for our future, in my opinion, at least. Our children today go through so much and see so much. They're exposed to so much through, like, the technology in the world. It's a rough world today, really, and they are going to need the support, not just our children that are in it today, but the future grandchildren, your grandchildren, our grandchildren, our children's children, all of that stuff. Sorry if the language isn't quite, but I'm just worried about what will happen to them if they don't have the support they need, if they're walking through the school hallways without that, like, extra support, because not all of us have that, really. A lot of us, a lot of children are missing out on a home life, and they're just seeing all this horrible news that there is today, and they have, like, nobody at home telling them that it's okay, and they need that. I'm sorry if I'm not so well-spoken today. That's all I have to say.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? It's Jas, right?
I'm Jas Sweet. I'm a sophomore at Sanford High School, and I'm in the alternative program. ALT has been the one home that stayed consistent for me during my time at Sanford, and I know most of my fellow students in the program feel the same way. It's very scary to assume that it could, not to believe that it could be taken away. It's helped me so much through just everything. And it, there were hundreds, at least 100 before me, who had that support, and if we keep it, there could be thousands later. It's just so terrifying to assume that there are going to be a lot of other people who won't have the necessary support after me. I know I won't be staying in Sanford High School if the program is taken away, and I know there's quite a few people who are already saying that.
Thank you, Jas. Oh, there was, I know, yeah, if there's a little star next to your name, then I know you're going to speak. Come on up, Jas. Come on up, Ginger.
Good morning. My name is Ginger, and currently, I don't have a child in Sanford High School. He was a freshman last year, and he's not there now. Long story. But I do have six kids. Five of them are no longer in school, and my 13-year-old attends a national top 200 high school in New York, and I have no reason to bring her to Sanford currently, because, well, unfortunately, your school doesn't rank very high. But I am here because of the alternative part, because all of my kids have either had an IEP or a 504, and listening to this is very bothersome to me, because I wouldn't normally sit here. I have my own struggles, and when I watch these children come up here and speak, it breaks my heart, because that was me, and it's still me, and you guys don't see me very often, because I don't leave my house. I can't leave my house. I can't grocery shop. I can't stand people in large crowds. They anger me. I'm just a hot mess, and if I am where I am today, I can only imagine where they're going to be without the proper support. I didn't become this way overnight. It was because of where I went to school and the people I had to deal with. Yay, kittery. Oops. Anyway, the program of studies for these ALT kids is very, very different, and I know how it helped my kids when they went to an ALT ed. These symptoms will never go away for these students. I pray for them in the next 20 to 30 years. They are guaranteed a fair, appropriate public education up until their 22nd birthday. We own that. We should give that to them. It is wrong to take it away from them. For us to remove the 335,000 for them and the 91,000 for attendance coordinator, we need them in school. Why would we take away the attendance coordinator? They were adding volleyball for 10,000. Last year, we had a student play lacrosse. He was very excited to do so, until when he signed up after we dropped $1,000 for lacrosse. You guys made it co-ed at Noble. Noble blows us away. A lot of kids in the Sanford School dropped out of the lacrosse sport because of that co-ed that was not advertised. So when you guys budget sports, you might want to think about that a little bit more. The ESOL due to enrollment, I think that's a nice way of all of our foreigners coming and getting dropped in Sanford. That's not our fault. That's not your fault, but it sucks. The other part, K through 2, 132,000 for iPads, I wouldn't give it to my kid in kindergarten. I don't know why you guys would trust little kids with those. They're irresponsible. They throw backpacks. They can't even get off the bus without permission. Why would you give them an iPad or a third grader a Chromebook? They're still picking their noses, their butts, their everything, and touching the iPad. Ew! I don't want them to have that stuff. And a lot of these people cannot, parents, even myself, even though I only have one kid in my house right now, I could not afford to pay for the damage. And lastly, but not, I heard the last speaker say she wouldn't attend Sanford. So are we going to bus them to the local schools that offer ALT learning? Because we have that right, too, if our schools don't offer. That is also in the main state of education handbook. So I'm just here, I hope you guys don't cut it, and I hope you make wiser decisions. And thank you for taking comments till 4:00 PM. It says so on the agenda. So thank you.
Thank you, Ginger. Is there anybody else?
I'm back, and I appreciate that you folks listened to me at one of the workshops, and as I said then, I appreciate everything you do, having been a school committee member for 10 years. I get it, and this is clearly the worst budget year I have ever seen, and I don't envy you. Before I start what I planned, I wanted to acknowledge these students who have taken the time to come in, and I was reminded this week that we didn't always have student representatives. It wasn't, and I looked it up, 2012, when Sean Sullivan did a story on one of our first ones. We had six applicants that year, and we could only pick two. And one of them just blew us out of the water when she came in. She was bright. She was articulate. She was involved in everything. She wanted to go into, I think, a career in political science, and she definitely wanted to be a president someday, and she might need to wait till she's 80 for that, but anyway. I looked her up on Google, and she is, has now clearly developed a nice career in the energy field. So I just wanted to say, it really matters, because over these years, it's made a big difference to have you folks, and your voices are so, so important. So I hope that didn't count as my time. So I, I'm the opposite of people. I can't read with glasses on. "The total elimination of the ALT ed program is going to have an extremely negative impact on its 40 students. We can be reasonably certain that several of the students will not continue to attend school after this year, and it will be unavailable to countless students who need it in the future. Eliminating this program entirely will save Sanford property taxes this year. But what about future impact? Consider the students who will no longer attend school. Where will they go? Most will stay right here in Sanford, and what will the future look like? Most of us pay property taxes, as well as state and federal income taxes. One way or another, it will cost financially and in the last potential for them and our community. A study out of Northeastern University 10 years ago found that each high school dropout costs taxpayers $292,000 through the course of their lives. It's likely much more than that now. That's not taking into account the personal impact in all areas of an individual's life into future generations. You have a dropout prevention program, a committee, and yet you know this will increase the number of dropouts. Imagine losing half of these students, which is not hyperbole, it's a strong likelihood. In terms of lost school funding dollars from the state, if 20 students leave or don't stay in future years, you're talking about $170,000 a year. There's an assumption that the students in this program will be easily assimilated into school programming. How exactly is that going to work? Has a coherent plan been developed? I wonder about that, since eliminating this program, which existed and has been successful for 26 years, has only been considered for a month or less, due to the pressures of the most difficult budget year I remember. And having been a member of the building committee, I know that it's because of this program's success that this area was planned and designed specifically for this program. What will become of the space now? I do recognize that difficult cuts are being made throughout the system, so it's not realistic to think ALT ed will be completely spared. But how about a more measured approach? Could it be scaled back and modified but still exist? For instance, maybe students could spend only part of their day there and be integrated in a planful way to other regular programming for a part of their day, as I believe is starting to happen. Or perhaps consider having the social worker that's being added at the high school located in that space and available to all students, but be a familiar presence to the ALT ed students. One way or another, these students need access to an environment that provides a sense of belonging, that enables them to learn academically, emotionally, and socially. A program like this, which has had much success and existed for 26 years, needs to be thoughtfully transitioned and maintained in a planful way. To do that, you need the continued leadership of Mrs. Webb and at least one other dedicated staff person to make that happen. It's the ethical thing to do. I'm asking you to be creative in modifying the program in a way that's fiscally responsible but enables its continued existence. Once it's gone, it will be extremely difficult to bring it back, but the need will not go away. And I would just add to, and you know, all of you know how passionate I am about early childhood education as well, and I'm thrilled about the preschool, pre-K program, but think about future generations, and if we value early childhood, the biggest indicator of success for any child is to have a parent with a high school diploma. So thank you.
Thank you, Kendra.
I believe Nikki Vicario on Zoom would like to speak.
Good morning. Are you able to hear me?
We are, yes.
Yes.
I just wanted to say hello from El Paso, Texas. I'm actually a Sanford ALT ed high school graduate. I graduated in 2013, I'm sorry, 2003. I'm trying to apparently take years off my age. If you look me up in the roster, you're not going to find Nikki Vicario. A reason that you're not going to find Nikki Vicario is that Nikki Vicario did not graduate from Sanford Alt School. A student by the name of Sean Mingo graduated from Sanford Alt School in 2003. Being able to be part of the Sanford Alt School allowed me to find who I am, allowed me to actually graduate high school with a high school diploma in a space where I did not feel comfortable to do so, lashed out in many different avenues prior to going to the Alt School, because I didn't know who I was. I didn't know what was going on inside of me, and the teachers in the program with the Alt School allowed me to do that. Not only allowed me to find myself as a student, but allowed me to get the support that I needed in order to become a productive member of society without a fear of going to school. I now live in El Paso, Texas, and I'm happy to say that I am one of the mid-level senior managers within a Fortune 100 company. I own, I have now built my second home within El Paso, Texas, and I never thought any of this was ever going to be possible, and I have to contribute all of my successes to being able to graduate high school from the Sanford Alt Program. Having that one-on-one attention from the teachers that were there, and I believe now it's 40 students that go there. Back when I was there, it was 32 students, so it was even more of a one-on-one ratio. But being able to have a program like that saved me. It saved my education, in many ways, saved my life. It broke my heart to hear that there is a possibility that this program will not continue. And it's 6:00 AM here in El Paso, Texas, and I felt as though I needed to come on and share my story with you all to understand how important a program like this is and how many lives are saved by having programs like this, not just educations that are saved. Thank you for giving me a moment to be able to share my story with you all, and I hope that it encourages you and supports you to think about. hope that it, it encourages you and supports you to think about what can be done in order to ensure that a program like this does continue on.
Just want to say thank you to Nikki for calling in, especially at 6 o'clock in the morning, much appreciated. You said we have one more?
We do have one more. Janice, if you could unmute, you have the floor.
Good morning. My name's Janice Legrande and I graduated from Sanford Alt School in 2015. I'm going to be emotional and I'm sorry. I started school in a different town in here, here in Maine, I was in Bedford my freshman year, and I failed all year long. I came to Sanford my sophomore year with like no credit. I was truant, I didn't want to go to school. I was scared to go to school. When I came to Sanford, I had a major life event happen and I ended up being an unaccompanied youth. I came to Sanford with no parents. I lived with my aunt, and she supported me with a roof over my head while I worked and went to school. I knew Mrs. Webb as Ms. McGee. And I'll never forget the first time I sat down with her and was able to interview for a spot at the Alt School. Because of the alternative program, I was able to graduate in 2015 with my class with honors. I was, I think ranked 89 out of the 200 and something kids that graduated that year. And if we want to look at long-term, how this program impacts our community, you have to look at every class. For as long as this program's been around, I apologize, I have a little one in the back seat, you might hear him. I have a child now in Sanford Schools. Uh, we did, my, I met my husband at the Alt Program, and him and I both graduated thanks to that program. We now have a six-year-old who attends Carl J. Lamb. We moved out of the state and actually moved back because of Sanford School Department. And Matt Nelson, I talked to you at length a few weeks ago about, you know, how important the Sanford School Department is to me as a community member. I never would have graduated if it wasn't for the Alt Program, let alone with honors. I never would have gone on to college. I work in early childhood education. I'm a toddler teacher at a local daycare. If it wasn't for the alternative program, I never would have graduated high school. I had too many things stacked against me, family-wise and outside of school. The alternative program helped me finish school, and because of that, I was able to go on to college and I'm able to help impact young minds of our community. And without it, I don't know what's going to happen to our community, it makes me very worried and scared. And I just really hope you guys look at the big picture. I know it seems like it only impacts 40 students, but it's way more than that. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Janice. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Hi, um, I go by Finn, and I am a freshman in the Alt Program so far. On the paper, it's Ava. Um, but for me, so far, the Alt Program has massively helped me because in, um, middle school and stuff like that, I am just a ball of anxiety, I'm not good at socializing, none of that really. But so far with the Alt Program, it's helped me a lot since it's less people than in the main school, and it helps me, like, actually be able to form bonds with other people. And so far, my grades have been really good. It's helped me a lot personally, and I know that it's helped other people. And if it get, if it does get closed, that's going to be really difficult for me and other people, because I know personally, I, I'm not built for the main building, like, at all. I'm not good with crowds or anything like that, so, yeah. And so the Alt Program has been helping me a lot so far.
Thank you very much, Finn.
Nikki reminded me of it, and I realized I forgot afterwards. Um, sorry, again, Stephanie Joffling. Uh, one thing to consider, I know it's a widespread issue and it's not specific to alt, but something to consider, a lot of these kids, a good amount of the kids in alt, also fall under the LGBTQIA umbrella. And it's a fact that they don't feel safe in that existence, in the mainstream building because of that, but they find that safety in that community there too. Kids that are going through transitions and finding themselves like Nikki. As a kid of a, a, a parent of a trans child, it brings me joy to see how well Nikki has done. And, um, just keep that in mind too. I know that there's, alt is not exclusive to having those kids, but I think that you would be surprised to see the percentage of how many of those kids are there and need that safety because they have faced bullying because of that outside of the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Um, I would also like to, um, read the names of, we had several emails in the last, even just the last 24 hours. Um, and I'm not going to read all the emails, but I do want to acknowledge that they have sent emails and expressed their, um, feelings and opinions about keeping the alt ed program as well. Teresa Shannon, Shagnan, um, Janice Legrande, Nicole A., Pam Cody, Steve, uh, Steve Gennaway, Linda Samia, Alyssa, Avril, Peter O'Brien, Mary Gennaway, and Nikki Vicario. Um, before we go any further, would you like to say anything? Okay.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, as my role, as a stu- as one of the student reps, I'm supposed to share what is best for the student body. And I believe that by cutting the alt program in total, we're going to be, um, sorry. I think that it's just going to be a big disservice to those 40 students and the countless other students that are going to come in the future that would be in that program. The alt program acts as a lifeline for these students. Without it, they wouldn't have the success that they do, um, they wouldn't have the security that they do, and I think it's important that we provide a safety net for these students. Um, I understand that the budget this year isn't going to make anybody happy. The amount of cuts that have to be made just to fit the amount of money isn't possible for us to continue everything as we want to. But I don't think that means that we have to sacrifice an entire program. I think that there can be compromises that could be made, I think that there could be reevaluations within the budget. For example, I looked in just Article 4, and I found countless things that I think, like, money spent on new equipment for athletics, it's important that we keep up with our athletics, that's a core part of our school, but I think that spreading out the new equipment that we have to buy over years in order to save these programs is very important, and that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Aiden. Elise?
Um, my name is Elsie Gendron, and like Aiden said, I think as student reps, it's our responsibility to, um, bring the perspective of all the peers at Sanford High School, including those at the Alternative High School. Um, I'm able to empathize really greatly with a lot of the students there, as I have struggled a lot with anxiety in my past. And though it is not to, I can't compare my experiences to theirs because it is not to the same extent, I can advocate for how extremely difficult it can be to get through everyday life feeling like anxious all the time. And I think that for these students, the idea of attending normal school is literally paralyzing, like, you cannot get out of bed, and it's not, like, it just is that way, and taking that away from them is detrimental to their education, because they need to be able to know that they have that safe space at school. And without the alternative program, they don't know that. Um, and I understand that, um, cutting the budget down and bringing tax numbers down is very important, but I think it's just very important to consider the futures of not only these students, but also of the future students to come who also need that extra help.
Thank you, Elsie. Emma, did you want to?
Um, so I just wanted to quickly share, I just, um, I wish there was some sort of like compromise we could come to, um, with like the alternative program. I understand it's a really difficult decision this year with the budget. Um, I just feel that there is a clear need for this program to actually continue. Um, coming back to school, or just even coming to school can be very anxiety-based, and I think that the alternative program kind of offers a safe space to help these students that, um, be able to thrive. Um, and then even if there was a part of like, maybe like the high school designated, like a designated area for these students, I think it would be very beneficial to them and Sanford's future and the community. And like was shared at Monday's meeting with all of the students that were brave enough to come up and share their stories. I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Emma.
Thank you. Um, we do have, I did make copies of some more of the emails that I forwarded you that we received that came in, uh, after, uh, last evening with that, so there are copies there as well to include to the other ones that had also come in.
These emails have already
Yes.
Mentioned the names, okay. Yes. One more, and then we've got to move on.
Ginger. Um, I, I'm very sorry to interrupt, Madam Chair, and thank you so much. I was listening to the students speak and the other students speak, and I'm hearing about all the, um, health concerns with the students and being safe, and I was listening to these three students talk about the anxiety, and, um, you know, yes, there's anxiety, and some of these students have depression and other illnesses. And at the end of the day, as being a teenager, and, we didn't have alt ed when I went to Kittery, and, um, I wish I had, I got kicked out of high school my junior year for being knocked up, apparently they don't like that. Um, and I should have had alt ed, probably. Um, I can also tell you that some of these students, um, probably have self-harming issues, and they probably have a lot of mental issues. And, um, if we get rid of this program, I really would be interested in the suicidal ideation attempts and successes of our students if we let go of this program. And that's a really scary fear, but it's going to be a reality if we get rid of adult ed, I mean, adult learning, um, alternative learning, I'm sorry. I don't do well at public speaking, but I really was listening to these students, and like they said, it's a lifeline, and if you get rid of one of those lifelines, everything else is going to snowball. So I just wanted to share that thought. I appreciate you guys allowing me to come up here again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ginger. Okay, I just want to say again, like I said on Monday, thank you very much for coming and for being part of this whole process. Um, I appreciate your sincerity and your, um, trust in sharing your stories and your experiences with us. And thank you to you guys, because it means so much that you're here and that you're here going through this whole process every year with us. And it's much appreciated that you have done what you're supposed to do, which is speak up for your fellow students. So, thank you. Okay, moving forward, um, business item, final 2024, 2025 budget for City Budget Committee. Mr. Nelson?
Sure. Uh, before we get started, I too want to also thank everyone who spoke in both this morning as well as, um, Monday evening, and also all the, um, information that we received in doing that, that is, um, greatly appreciated. Um, and I'm, um, so impressed that, I know in many cases, that was not easy for people to do, um, for that, and I, we recognize that, and, uh, very much, um, want to honor and thank people for, um, for stepping forward and advocating for the program. Um, it was mentioned before that this is probably the most challenging budget, um, that, uh, the school department has faced. And, um, I know in my time here, um, first-year superintendent, uh, we had to cut 11 positions that year. And that was not, um, that was not all fun, and never is, as we're trying to be able to meet the needs of our students, uh, the lifeline of our community, to be able to do that. Uh, at that time, I think, uh, from my perspective, we were able to make some changes there that, uh, there were impacts for sure, but I also think we were able to do that in a way that helped us, uh, right-size some things and, and do that. Uh, this budget process is not something that we just started, um, last week, uh, it's been ongoing. Uh, we start that, uh, right in the fall at our level, uh, working hard, bringing a budget forward that can meet the needs of our students and our community, but at the same time recognizing what those impacts could be for our taxpayers and on our community. Uh, and, um, there's a lot of hard work that goes into that. Um, uh, we're at a point now that all the changes that we've made, uh, there's no ploys or things that try to come back in these, these are things that are needed in our, uh, in our school department, and those are difficult, uh, decisions, and there's impacts on all of those. Um, and that's what makes the work really challenging. What I'd like to do is try to, uh, as the school committee started back at the end of January, after we had received our preliminary subsidy report, we've really dug into the budget, uh, deeply. So I'd like to try to condense that work the best that I can, and I realize that I run a risk of that because it could come off as being, um, cold and insensitive, and that's not what the intent is. It's trying to be able to condense that. If people want to go back and look at the work, we have our, uh, school committee budget workshops have been recorded, we've got the presentations and things to be able to go there. The challenge that we have this morning is to approve a budget so that we can pass that on to the city council. The city council will spend the month of March, uh, working through that, both the school department budget and the city budget, uh, as there's coming back to be able to defend that where there could be, uh, changes, uh, to both of those budgets. Ultimately, for us and the school department, uh, the city council is going to approve a school department budget on April 2nd. And they approve that budget on April 2nd, and then it goes to the voters in the June referendum. And then that's when it's going to be either approved. We've been, um, I feel in, in my time in Sanford, uh, as superintendent, um, I'm so proud of this community, uh, in so many ways, in so many ways. Uh, but it's a someone, it, it's a community that supports education, it supports its children. And it doesn't do that, uh, it doesn't just do that freely, uh, we've, I feel we've worked hard to earn the community's trust with that, realizing that when we do this work, we understand the impact on, on taxpayers. And, and trying to be able to still find those, and working in the challenges that we have that are in front of us. So I'm going to try to condense this down to be able to, uh, lead the, lead us to a point where the school committee will then be open to be able to look at, um, to look at, um, considerations for us to be able to reach a, uh, improvement, uh, a decision this morning. If we can go, uh, Beth, to the, uh, presentation, um, with that, that first page, uh, I mentioned we started at the end of January, and when we did that, what you saw was, just for us to turn the page, just for us to take what we have, the existing local budget, and move that into, uh, 2024, 2025, you're seeing an increase of 5%, uh, over $3 million. And that, as we know, in everything that we do, everything is costing more, um, for that. And that is, um, that's our reality. The initial budget that I presented to the school committee had an increase, uh, expense increase of 9.2%, $5,676,263. That's just on the expense side. That impact for taxation was up over 27%, okay? And we are aware of that, that as much as, uh, we look at those numbers, that's a pretty sobering starting point. starting point for us to be able to realize what we need to do. If you go to the next page, Beth. So we made a lot of changes in the times that we've worked as a school committee or recommendations or some considerations. And we've been able to take that budget and reduce it by over $2 million. And what you see there is a list of the things that come back, and a lot of that is starting in the classrooms and moving out, the best that we can. You're going to realize there's been a lot of creativity that's also gone into this. There's some restructuring that were going on to look at it about maybe we can do things different or deliver some things in a different way, rather than just saying, well, that's how we've always done it. You look at that list, there's everything from decreasing tuition reimbursement costs. There's also some teaching positions and ed tech positions that have been on that. There's also some requests that were also made that were not in this year's local budget that were considered, but ultimately, even though there's probably some legitimacy to those requests, it's not something that we're in a position to be able to accept that. You can come back and you see the removal of everything from capital to administrative assistance. We very much look closely at our enrollment to be able to do that, to make sure we can right size that. There's, as I mentioned, some capital pieces. There's been things in the athletics to look at in adjusting things all along. And so that is leading up to a reduction of $2,647,150 as of last Monday, Mass. Monday. If you go to the next slide, there were revenue changes also that wasn't just on the expense side. We received some additional subsidy when it came to our adult education program. That's something that's also part of the Sanford School Department, a very valuable part of Sanford School Department. That additional subsidy was very helpful because that helped that there was not going to be an impact to the local budget from, from adult education. We also worked hard for Sanford Regional Technical Center. That serves Sanford High School students, but it also serves, it also serves seven other sending schools. And so we've been able to work at that and reaching an agreement with them, so some cost sharing, so that those aren't going to be burdens that fall onto the, just solely onto the Sanford taxpayers. So there's a lot of work that's gone on to be able to do that as well. We also looked at, the challenge that we have in this budget is we're looking at what's right in front of us, but we're also trying to look at what is down the line and what is also going to be coming. And unfortunately, from my position and what I forecast, I don't see things getting better. In terms of for Sanford, we are a high receiver of state subsidy. 70% of our funds are coming from state subsidy. And how that formula works is that it's really, there's a lot of driving forces to it, but the two driving forces are the valuation of our property and student enrollment. Well, our valuation is increasing. So is everybody in York County and Cumberland County. So even though our houses are worth more, because the way the formula works, they think that you should be able to pay more. And I know if you look at the, our community, you look at the demographics, you look at the Alice Report, we've got people that are in situations that don't have that ability to pay more with that. If you look at our state subsidy and the valuation of how it works, they expect Sanford to pay $567,000 more. We reduce, our subsidy was reduced by $567,000. And that's not something that is just easily saying, okay, Sanford taxpayers, take that on. Okay? We also look at, when you're in the Sanford School Department, we're a large organization, and we have a lot of personnel. That's just the nature of schools. That's not, Sanford is not different from any other school communities when it comes into it. We want to provide the best education that we can. We want to make sure we're following all the laws and doing that safely the best that we can. And so I know health insurance is a major impact all the way around. It's a major impact for us. And so what we've been able to do is to try to mitigate that the best that we can. So right now, in this budget, we did use some health insurance reserves that we've been able to build up because health insurance can be one of those things that is very unpredictable. Okay? We're expecting in this budget, a 17.5% increase in health insurance. 17.5, well over $1 million. And so we're working at putting some of the reserves, 475,000 of that to this budget. And that's dangerous when you're able to do that because you're being able to come back and create some cliffs. We do have some remaining health insurance reserves, about 480,000. But I think that that's something that we obviously want to be able to hold on to so that, my recommendation is so that looking ahead beyond this year, we can be with that. We also have carryover. And in this carryover, we've recommended using some of that carryover. Now, the, what we've recommended is when you use carryover, that's dangerous because you're also creating some cliffs. When I first came on to the school committee, that's what we had done. We had used carryover. And we had a deficit because of that, my first year of $376,000. And so that was something for us to say, that's very careful that we won't want to do that. We want to make sure that what we're asking the taxpayers, that we're using. Okay? Now, that being said, when you have an organization as large as the Sanford School Department, there's a lot of uncertain and surprising things that do come up. And when they come up, we want to make sure that we're able to cover those. We go through an audit process. That's part of the requirements that we have. And when our audit report came in, they, our carryover was right around 3%. And that's where they want it to be. That's where they recommend that you have that. During COVID, when we, our schools were not open for that time, obviously, there are some savings that happened because of that. I don't want to go back and revisit that time, no one does. But as we've done that, we've used some of that carryover to do that. In this current budget this year, we used $850,000 of that carryover. Okay? I've also recommending for this 2024-2025 budget that we're using 500,000 and carryover again. Okay? There's still some remaining carryover that we have, but that is below 3%. Okay? The recommended 3% that you have. But when you look at what we've done with the revenue adjustment, we've also put over $1,217,388,000 towards this budget coming back from revenue. Okay? There are still some reserve accounts that we have in areas that had been set up in previous years, especially when those volatile things that you sometimes have to be prepared for. I already talked about health insurance. We've had the other ones in fuel with that. In this current budget of what we're using for fuel budget with that, we've used $40,000. We have none, I have not recommended any for this coming budget, and we still have remaining of over $40,000 there. Special education is one of those areas that is, it's a big cost, which is a part of our budget. And a lot of that is, we've been burned in the past about a lot of unexpected costs that come in there that we're not ready for. So what we've been able to do is to be able to set up reserve accounts. In this current budget, we have almost $120,000 of special education reserves. For the proposed budget that I'm proposing, right now, we don't have any of those in there. We still have just under 70,000 in reserves. We also have some capital reserves. And this is us as we're trying to be able to plan for what's in front of us, but also plan. We're lucky in Sanford that we have some outstanding facilities. Sanford High School, Sanford Regional Technical Center, those are state funded projects, but the citizens of Sanford stepped up and they also wanted to, also with additional resources and taxes, were able to get Alumni Stadium, a turf field, a track, Sanford Performing Arts Center for it. And those are things that right now have been tremendous assets. They, we measure up with anybody, anytime, anywhere. And I know superintendent, I'm proud of that. I also know that we've got a plan for those, that they don't have a long time life. So we're being mindful of trying to also prepare that when the time comes for us to replace a turf field or a track, we're not going to say, hey, citizens, please come back and give us $500,000 or put that out to the bond because our community has been very supportive to that point, to this point. And I think we'll continue to do that, but I also worry about putting that burden. So we're doing our best to try to balance the needs in front of us, but also be planful down the line in terms of looking at that. If you go to the next page, Beth. We have made some additions to this budget. Okay? And that's not because at the end, we're always looking at what other needs in front of us. And those needs have probably changed over times when other people, years ago, in terms of that. And that's something that we're trying to look at to say, how can we be able to come and adjust that and do that differently? When you're looking at the additions, those additions come back to 1.3 million. And you'll see that through those is the, those positions that are right now with asterisks next to them, those will not be new positions to the Sanford School Department. They're going to be new positions to the budget because we've been able to use the ESER funds, the federal funds, and we knew that as those were coming, that they were going to come to an end. We used those to make sure that we were getting our students back to school. How did, how, how did it work coming, doing school every other day? Was that a lot of fun? Was it fun in terms of those pieces? No, we wanted to get our kids back to school. We invested in staff. We wanted to address the educational recovery, the learning loss, and the social emotional needs of our students that our students are presenting. And you're hearing from a population of our students talking about those. And that's something that's not just into that population. All of our students are having impacts on a social emotional level. So you're looking at us being able to say, the social workers that we have at our elementary schools and middle school and high school, those are important positions for us to be able to come back and keep. You can also look at, there's some other things there that are coming back. We mentioned the ESOL, our multilingual learners. There are situations where that population has increased, but we've also received subsidy. We've received state subsidy because that population has increased. What we're doing here is we're using that state subsidy, increased state subsidy for that area. We're not using that for tax relief. I'd like to use it for tax relief, I think everyone would, but we also have those needs that come back to be able to do that. So I think that you can see there that there are some additions to the local budget of $1,305,557. If you go to the next slide, there are, this budget that we're putting forward, 34 positions that are not continuing. Okay? And the majority of those are coming from either the local budget. There's many of those who are coming from ESER positions that we knew that those funds were going to be going out as we were trying to be able to right size. You're seeing our class sizes now getting back to pre pandemic. And there's also some grants that we're very appreciative to be able to have. We'd love for those to continue, but that's not something that we're in a position to put on to the local taxpayers. And so you can look at that list as it comes back. The article is where they fall into our budget. A number of those are coming back into classrooms. And you can see how that would break out in terms of, majority of those are classroom teachers that we knew. Enrollments would be getting back to the pre pandemic for that. You also see that there's some special education positions that we're asking to also be able to continue. We also receive funding, state subsidy for special education, that we have to make sure that we're putting towards the cost of special education and not using that just for tax relief. Okay? So I think that's important. I know that when we had ESER positions, we knew that when we invested in those, they were going to go away. And the idea wasn't that we were just going to say, oh, let's put those on to the local. Some of those needs that we had for ESER positions, those were needs that we had before the pandemic. And it was easy for us to be able to meet those needs through those funding to be able to do it. It doesn't mean that those needs have gone away. And in some cases, they've intensified for us to be able to do that. And rather than just add on, we're sitting back and trying to be creative about restructuring. You'll see there's some positions in the local, and I want to come back and say what I had mentioned before. Any of those positions are having, the loss of those positions are going to have an impact on the Sanford School Department. They're going to have an impact. It's not a situation where, oh, those positions, no. You're going to see some major impacts in looking at that. We're trying to look at, at the best that we can to look at those resources, to come back and look at the 3,200 students that we have, starting in pre K, working all the way even into adult education. Okay? If you can go back to, so.
Which way do you want me to go? Oh, I did weird stuff.
Something is looking.
Try this again. Oh, I think it's Ben. Hold on.
That's better.
Ben's got it in, there we go. You need to go forward?
Yeah. Okay. So as we get back to the challenge that we have, when you look at the expense adjustment of over $2 million, you look at the additional revenue, you're seeing a taxation adjustment to that initial budget that came in at 9.2% increase on the expense side and over 27% on the taxation side. The taxation adjustment is going to be $3,282,103. Okay? If we break that down, what I'd look, like to do is to present a couple options for consideration and let the school committee know, there can be other options too. This isn't something that is just, this is as we've tried to follow our work, but also being able to paying attention to the process, there can also be, it's not an either or with these options. It can come back in as we're able to look at it. But if we break that down with option one, you'll see that we went from 9.2. If we take all of those changes that have been presented, you'll then see that 9.2% expense will be reduced down to 5.9%. And it'll be $3,611,548. The taxation impact will go from 29.4 when we started on that budget, down to $1,540,394. And that'll lead you to a 9.4% increase. What that would mean is what would go forth to the city council would be an appropriations for a budget vote of $65,98,610. The city council, when we get to that process, the city council can look at what we present to them, and they can, there's probably three different options that they can have. They can say, thank you, school committee, very well done. We appreciate all the hard work. We know it wasn't easy. We are going to be able to support that budget as is. Another option that they could do would be, school committee, thank you, we've looked at it from our side, we're going to be able to say, you can increase your budget. Highly unlikely. And I don't say that just because of, the city on their end is also receiving a tremendous amount of challenges. I want to point out, one thing I'm, add to the list of things I'm proud about is the working relationship that the school department has with the city. We are not competing, we're not against each other, we're working for the best interests of Sanford. We have a city council that very much supports our schools, very much supports schools, and that's very appreciative. The challenge is, everybody wants the same amount of services that they're receiving, but they don't want the increase in taxes. And that is the challenge that we have. So with one budget, one option, that's the $65,98,610. Oh, oh, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. How could I forget that one? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, maybe indirectly, I was, my mind was saying that. Correct. Yeah, yeah. The third option, the city council can say, thank you, school department, but 9.4% taxation increase is just something that our citizens can't take on. And so as much as that we have that working relationship, that's a very real option that we're going to have. Okay? When it gets to that point, that there's going to have to be some additional adjustments to. adjustments to our budget on some way. Okay? Yes, thank you. So also, what people have to understand is that when it gets to this point, the city council, what they approve is a final number. They, at the end of the day, they still leave it to the superintendent and school committee for us to determine how we can take that number. And this is still a fluid process as we're able to come back. It's been very challenging as we look forward to try to be able to understand what the, what the landscape is, right? We don't all have crystal balls in terms of looking at that. So for us, we're going to approve something this evening, this morning, that they're going to come back and, as I said, they could come back and give us those options, or they could come back and say, we need some further cuts. And if they do, once we have an idea of what it is, you might see some things changing around and moving. Okay? So those are the three things that can happen. So option one is appropriations of $65,98,610. If we go to option two, you would look at what we're doing there, and this one, the change would be, we would return alternative education to the budget, $335,378, and expenses would go back to the budget. We would remove the counseling receptionists, $50,300 from the budget. When you add that in, that would be a net increase to the budget of $285,078. What that then means is, starting at our 9.2, that would then result in an expense increase of 6.3, and then it would also result in an increase of taxation of 11.1. Because that total appropriation, that total amount that would be going forward to the city council is $65,383,688. So that's, is, those are, as we've done a lot of work to this point, those are two options. As I mentioned, that's not an either/or. There could be also some additional options that might also be able to put forward for that. So I'm there to answer any questions or comments. And from that, I think it would be then, after that, entertaining anything that people have in terms of making motions so that we could be able to have discussion.
But I just, I had a meeting with Mr. Park. You're going to go over it?
Yeah. No, we can't speak to this right now. But, yeah, but thank you.
Will the presentation be online or can we get it at home?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so based on the presentations that Matt just mentioned and went over, he also mentioned that if anybody in the school committee has any other suggestions for budgets, this is the time to speak.
So do I need to make a motion to have a discussion? Or, because, so I make a motion to have a discussion on these two options?
No.
No. Oh, sorry.
It needs to be more specific, one or the other. It then needs to be seconded, and then the discussion can happen.
Or if you have...
Or if you have a different one, you can put that one forward.
So as chair, as chair, I'm looking for, right now, for, if you have another option, bring it up now, and that one will be discussed, and then we will move forward.
It needs a second.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so motion discusses a different option. I'm going to go for that.
I will second that for you.
Well, we got to know what the motion is. What is the motion?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. So you want me to, okay, for my second option, um...
Third option.
Third option, sorry, a new option. For, for me, when I've looked at this kind of holistically, I think the AL program is getting these kids back focused on their academics and their education, which is where the school, what is, what the school is charged to do. My third option is, when I look at the $3 million we spend in counselors and social workers, I do think there is a duplication of services there. And taking the ESER positions that were already due to end and are up right now. If you take the four social workers remaining, obviously ESOL we have to keep, and the other services are there, we're looking at a salary and benefit total of $353,362, which is more than what the AL program is utilizing in our budget. So that would be the option that I would present because I do believe we need to get back to education, and that is what we are charged with as a school committee. We are not charged with providing professional mental health for our students.
Melissa, how did you get to your $353,000? I just want to make sure...
I added it from...
What, what, what added, what positions got you, that you're removing from the budget?
Oh, it's the, the four social worker positions.
Four?
Yep.
Okay. Were there any other positions?
All, all in Article One.
Just those four social work positions?
Yep, yep, that's...
If it's okay, we're going to ask our business administrator Cheryl Fornier to come up because she can be able to adjust some of these numbers for us to actually see what the numbers would be in terms of that.
So am I giving Melissa's...
Oh, was I?
Melissa's motion is to remove all ESER social workers in Article One and put back in alternative add...
Do we need to have a second?
Yep.
So do I second it now?
Someone needs to, yep.
I'll go ahead and second it so we can move forward in discussion.
Just for clarification, we're looking at a social worker at MCS, CJL, Sanford Pride, and SMS. Is that what you're including, Melissa?
Yes, correct. And I confirm, her number is correct. So it's $353,361 is those four positions. Can I ask a clarifying? Do you, what about the counseling receptionist? Is that keeping in or caking out?
So can I adjust? Because this was, I didn't know that I was motioning to do that. I didn't know that was what's happening. I would adjust leaving the social worker at the middle school and removing the receptionist, and I don't have the math for that.
I can give you that. So that now becomes $292,408.
Hold on, Cheryl. We need a second. We'll get, I wanted to get you working on this, anticipating it was coming, but I think, if I understand it...
Amended it, so...
Yeah, so now, her motion's been amended to receive the three elementary social workers and the school, the school counseling receptionist, and all removed and putting into the budget alternative learning.
Yep.
Is that correct, Melissa?
Yes, correct.
Do we have a second on that?
Seconded.
Okay. Now, chair, it's up for discussion.
Okay. I would like to have discussion on this issue. Thoughts, Amy?
I definitely would not be in favor of this at all. The impact of losing social workers in our elementary, in any of our schools right now would be given just where we're, where every district is, and frankly, in the U.S., that would be disastrous, in my opinion. And so I, you know, I would have to, I would not have to, I would not vote for that.
So what I would say in response to that is, social workers have plenty of opportunity to still work with our children. They don't have to be hired by the school department. There's job opportunities out there for the social workers, and they could still, you know, provide care. Not only would they be providing care during the school system, but it would be consistent care throughout the school year, where we fall short offering that service within our school department. All these kids have these services in place during the school year. They go through the summer, and we all talk about what it's like when they come back. So on another note of that as well, it's covered by many insurances, especially Maine Care. And we pay Maine Care as a federal, at a state level or a federal level. And we are also now paying for it again in the school department. So it's kind of like the taxpayers pay for that twice. And that's where I've come up with this. Could we somehow, you know, create a space for social, outside social workers to conduct their meetings at the school? That would, that would be a great alternative to local taxpayers paying for something that is not educational and academics, which is what we are actually charged to do. And the AL program is providing education and academics.
Go ahead, Amy.
I guess I just fundamentally disagree, especially as a pediatric nurse and did a lot of behavioral health in many of my 26 years of nursing. But what I will say, just going along with this suggestion, is that it is a shame that currently the state does not give us any monies in the formula for social workers in all this, in all of the schools throughout the state of Maine. It actually is shocking that we don't get a dime and that all the social workers have to come from a local budget. Because I think everybody in the state house would agree that social workers are important, that there isn't enough in community. Students don't, can't, most of the majority of our students cannot drive to those appointments. Many of our families can't drive, don't have a vehicle. And so access to social workers and case management is very difficult. The list is long. And so I think we can agree to disagree with that, which is fine. We can still be friends. But I think, you know, with the audience here and everybody listening, we really need the community to be helping at the state level regarding funding for social workers, school counselors, the list is long here. Because these needs were before COVID, and I think we can all agree, or not, I believe that we are always going to need social workers in the school. And so when this budget is over, I am going to, that's going to be my next mission, and I hope people will join me. Because we need to be, we need to be getting funding for it. It's crazy that it has to come out of our local budget.
Anybody else have comments? Matt?
Sure. Thank you, Melissa. I think, I appreciate the thought that's gone into where we are. I do want to mention that from, from the school department perspective, one of the things that we've looked at is, you are right, there are some outside organizations that we do have space in our schools for. Suites of workers that would come back to be able to do that. In some situations, those positions, as you've mentioned, have not been filled in some situations. But what we've seen is, and from, if you look at it from the, from our administrator perspective, is that we have students with needs in all of our schools, especially our elementary and middle school, that those needs are coming in that are impacting the education of the people that are in that classroom. They're impacting their peers in terms of their ability to receive, and they're also impacting the teacher's ability to deliver instruction. And so administrators have looked at that, that we have not had these positions before. We saw what they've done in, in, through the ESER funds. We've also seen the impact that they've had because now we have dedicated resources right there, right then, that can be able to meet those needs, to allow that learning environment for all of our students, as you mentioned, to get back into making sure they're part of teaching and learning. So that was something, as you looked at this, it was a budget brought forward, that the idea about, wait a minute, are we just trying to bring ESER positions and just trying to move them into the local budget? There's also that perspective that we've come back to look at that, to say, for us to come back, us, and I mean as a school department, to be able to come in every day to say, okay, we want to be able to provide the best education that we can to all of our students. It's looking at having a principal and assistant principal, I'm talking elementary. We also want the school counselor. We want support and transition opportunity, and we want the social work. Those allow us to come back to be able to help in looking at that. So that's the, that's the backstory behind coming in there to say that that would be a recommendation for us to do that. And so I only say that not because I'm not supportive of things that you're talking about, but I wanted to give that perspective of why that was, why those were in there as being offered into the budget for the social work positions.
Thank you. Emily or Jen, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I just want to say that I appreciate Melissa's comment on making it a point in the gap of services over the summer and the return of students to school after the summer break. I hadn't thought about the continuity of services in that perspective before, so she makes a good point about that, in hopes that moving those services outside of the school department would enable those children to receive a continuity of services. You know, we then get in the weeds with where the healthcare system currently stands in offering those services. Additionally, Mr. Nelson's explanation on the impact of learning for our learners, not just those who are receiving social work services, but also the behaviors associated with those students and the impact that they have on the general education of all students in their classrooms. For that reason, you know, I cannot currently support the motion because fundamentally, I'm looking at the budget from a perspective of, how do we stretch our dollars to touch the most amount of students in a positive way, much like Melissa has said, to get back to education. I do agree with Melissa that the alternative education program does provide that environment. I guess for me, I think it's important to remember that we are not here charged with solutions, meaning we have to trust our leadership to create programming based on the monies that we allocate to meet the needs of all kids. The program for alternative education isn't fixed. It's directly related to salary and benefits of those who work the program, and it's not constant from year to year. Each year, the expense of this program will rise due to contractual salary and benefit increases because of the program's employees. So it's not something that we can allocate today and then just put it in a, in a line item and just see it through for the next 10 years. As Mr. Nelson stated, the forecast and projections based on the valuation, as well as the reduction of subsidy, you know, we have to look at sustainability. So, you know, I think about what Mrs. Gannaway said about Mrs. Webb being an English teacher extraordinaire, and Mrs. Williams saying continued leadership. And I think, you know, wouldn't it benefit other students to also have access to her talents and skills? You know, currently, she is supporting 39 students. Other teachers do not have that caseload. So I agree with the recommendations of reinventing a program like the AL program, but that is not what we're here today to do. We're here today to pass a budget, and then we are here to, you know, extend that trust to our leadership in hearing the experiences that were vulnerable and intimate from this student body population. You know, when Mrs. Joplin talked from the psychologist's perspective of some of our most anxious students, you know, we sit in a position where we see students weekly. We know that outside of these 39 students, there are also many, many, many other students suffering in the main building of Sanford High School. You know, I'm inspired by the conversations that are happening right now because, and I'm emotional about it, because I, I love children. People know that I love children. You know, I've had experiences in my own life with people that I love pertaining to mental health, and I understand the impact that that can have. You know, I have concerns that students would not feel safe in the main building because of their gender identity or sexual orientation. You know, I want to vet that. I want to make sure that people feel safe. I, I want people to feel supported. You know, it's not an easy seat to sit in to have to take something away that is so meaningful to people. But this is what we signed up for. And so I just want to circle back to, we are here to address a number. And then from there, we extend grace and trust and faith that everyone will go forth and do the best work. But keeping in mind, you know, the things that we cannot change. We cannot change the increases to salary and benefits. We cannot, we don't have control over health insurance costs. We don't have control... We don't have control over the valuation in Southern Maine, which will continue to climb as we continue to be a suburb of greater municipalities, be it in New Hampshire or Massachusetts. We cannot change our Alice Report numbers, you know, so, so I just think that all of those things needed to be said, and I appreciate everybody's feedback.
Thank you, Jen. I wanted to, this sustainability piece, it goes through, that echoes in social work as well, as well as the ALT program. I think the salary and benefits is going to increase no matter who or what we're talking about. I also just want to mention, I question the social work that is provided at the school level. They went during their presentation, I don't remember all the details, but they were kind of restructuring to going to push-ins and this and that, and I think our students could benefit from a one-hour social, an actual social work service, which is not what we're providing at the school level as well. So that's, that is where that is coming from. I think our students, I'm not saying we don't need them, I'm not saying that we shouldn't help and provide, I guess I'd provide a place for outside social workers to come in, but I don't think it should be part of our local budget, and, and I, and I think that we are paying taxes twice on that.
That leaves me. So, um, this is an incredibly difficult situation, and I have the privilege as chair to talk with everybody individually and hear everybody's thoughts, and everybody's philosophies, and everybody's ideas. It's incredibly difficult to try to shorten all these thoughts and feelings and facts and data into three short sentences, so that I can explain why it is that I feel that I, what I want to say is, I support Melissa's suggestion. It doesn't come easy. I don't mean to say that one program is more important than another, or that some positions are more important than others. As Jen mentioned, we have so many things that we need to take into consideration. If this were a situation where this conversation that we're having right here, the conversation that we had on Monday, where we discussed one program, you've all seen how emotionally charged it is, how difficult it is to just consider that. We, as the school committee, and the superintendent, and the administrators at the school, and even the teachers, but us, because we're the final straw in this decision-making process for the budget, we don't have the luxury of just thinking about one program. We have to think about every single program, every single position, every single demographic, every single section of the school. And in addition to that, I would like to add that we always talk about the cliff, the cliff is here, and this is an incredibly difficult budget season, but the cliff is always there. It's not like one year there isn't one, and the next year it's bigger, or, the cliff is always there. So if you just take a moment with me, and the way that I picture it is, every single year, there's a cliff, and everything that we have to consider about the school budget, everything, from elementary school, all the way to high school, all the way to the principal, to the custodian, to the cafeteria people, every aspect of the school department is standing right on that cliff. And we are charged with figuring out, we've got 3,200 students, and we've got, this is all we've got to work with. How can we reach everybody and make it the best experience possible for everybody? Remembering that, we are charged with education. First and foremost is our children's education. And that's why we ran for the school committee. We're not charged with representing the public, we are charged with representing students' education. And as difficult as that is, we have to keep coming back to that. So having said that, as we're moving through and trying to figure out, what are we going to do here? We've got this pot of money, and I think a lot of people think we are giving this money, $65 million, and we just get to pick and choose where it goes. I wish it were that easy, but it's not. There are laws, regulations, statutes, federal mandates, state mandates, city needs, all sorts of different things that tie our hands, and I don't think that the public necessarily knows all of those restrictions that we have. I certainly didn't know them. I didn't know there were that many. And so, again, I'm standing here, I'm at the cliff, trying to figure out who's getting pushed over, who's getting sent up, who's getting sent down, whatever the process might be. And then there's also the added fun of, if you press this button, you say, I'm going to choose you, when you choose this program, or you choose this department, or you choose this whatever, all of a sudden you realize it's one big giant web. And when you press something here, all of a sudden, 50 different things over here start ringing as well. And it's all different levels, different, I mean, it is insane. Having said all of that, I just wanted to share what it's like for us as we go through this process, and I hope that you appreciate that. And I ask you, please, I ask the public in general, before you make comments on social media, or whenever you're talking to each other, to please remember that we are all human, and we all try, are trying desperately to make this work for everybody. And remember that there's a lot of things that you don't know unless you peek behind the curtain, and we're still learning so much ourselves. And every time that I think I have a handle on something, there's some other statute, or some other random rule or regulation that we didn't know, I didn't know existed, or something that's coming down from DOE all of a sudden. So just please remember all of that, and know that we're trying our best. Having said all of that, and given you all of my struggles here, I do make a motion to support Melissa's budget, what do you call it, budget?
Recommendation.
Recommendation. Because I do think that we are entering an era where education and everything needs to shift and be changed and thought of in a different way, and I do think that there are duplication of services, and I do think that we need to think about things in a different way. I also think that by doing this, it provides a balance between providing essential services for our student body, while fulfilling our responsibilities to the taxpayers, because that's the last piece of it. Not the last by importance, but one of the other pieces we need to think about is community. How much can the community pay? Taxes are a real issue, and so that's what I have to say. Sorry for taking so much time. Go ahead, Emily.
I am fact and data-driven. I make that note, like, I'm just, I love numbers. It's, you know, it's just me. So I'm just going to backtrack just a tiny bit. I wanted to speak what to the student rep said, because there were some things that were said that I, I think need clarifying. So we were talking about Article IV, which is athletics, and I see a whole lot of equipment, assistant athletic director, pitching mound, football sled, scorer's table, even our bleachers at Cobb, lacrosse, all of those were cut. So I just want to make it very clear to our taxpayers, like, I, I don't see a whole lot of fluff in our athletic department. Also, you know, I too read, you can't help it, right? The face, the, I call it the Book of Faces, you know? That's my late-night read when I can't sleep, and you want to got, like, get all the local dirt. It's like the National Enquirer. So I too read the comments that are being said, and, and so some of the big comments were around those ESER positions, and so I, I just want to go over those again. Out of those ESER positions, we have removed 19 of them. We have removed one grant position. We have removed 14 existing local positions, for a total of 34 positions removed from our budget. What we have added, our 12 ESER positions are moving over, that were existing, moving over to our local budget. Three grant positions are moving over to our local budget. One new position, totally new, of an ESLO support person is moving over. So that's 16 positions added. Of those 12 ESER positions moving over from ESER to local, I am, off the top of my head, looking at them, minus the ESOL teachers, all of them but two are really support positions. They're not teacher-related positions, so they are support position, positions for our entire student body. So I just wanted to kind of put that out in the air. I think it's important. I did prepare something to read today, and I would like, given the chance, to read that, if you will allow. I first want to commend the students and the parents that have advocated thus far. Advocacy work can be extremely intimidating and even scary, and you guys have done a tremendous job, and I would expect nothing less from a caring community to advocate for ALT learning to, to remain in our school system. I hope more parents moving forward and students feel empowered to do so now, and again, in the future, because it's really important work to be done. I will never, ever not encourage you to do so. I can't, I can't express how important it is, and you guys are learning an extremely valuable lesson. To be transparent also, although we have heard your voices in support, we have heard some voices moving forward from students, current students, that also do not feel safe to speak here, and have concerns about the current state of ALT program, and not feeling supported, and I also want to recognize those students today. Briefly, I want to share to you my lived experience, and it's a difficult one, and it's not one that's fun to share, but I have two adult children. One is a very young adult, one I realized just turned 29, and I was like, oh my gosh, how did that happen? But both have struggled. So my son had been diagnosed with ODD, which is Opposition Defiant Disorder, and extremely difficult to overcome. My other child has BPD, which is Borderline Personality Disorder, and if you look up the statistics on that, they're grim. And I fight every day as a parent to keep my child alive. We have been through crisis too many times to count, being called to the school. We have had hospitalizations, we have had multiple suicide attempts and suicidal ideation. So with that said, I have an immense amount of empathy for families going through this pain, for children going through the pain, and the unthinkable, and for all the teachers who have tender hearts to help them. I have so much empathy. I think I speak for all of us that we don't take this matter lightly or easily, but moving forward in this part of my speech, if you will, I'm only speaking for myself. There are two driving forces for me today, and have been for weeks, regarding alternative learning program, and one of them is what the taxpayers can absorb in this community. I think we can all agree there needs to be more funding for public education. It always seems under attack, and I agree with Amy, I make it my mission to really dive into advocacy work at the state level, and I think we've had those conversations as a board, that we should band together and advocate more for our Sanford schools. But for Sanford in particular, what can the taxpayers absorb right now? How much can we raise taxes when so many are struggling? Our homeless student population has exploded. Some of us would be okay with a significant increase, but most, most would not. I think of these trying, I think of those who are trying to keep their homes and food on the table, and I also think of our senior population when I think about the taxes. Another driving force, and unpopular one for me, is what the numbers reflect. We currently have 39 students in the ALT Ed program. Three of our senior class members have been students who have entered it from freshman and saw it through, but on the same token, in Semester One of this year, all, out of all the classes that were taken, seven were failed, 14 were withdraw fail, and that is not a dig at the program, it's tough. All our students have, are, it's tough. We have two students with IEPs, 11 with 504s. And one interesting data that I found was that all ALT students currently take a class in the main high school for fifth block. Those classes vary from English, geometry, art band, wildlife bio, JMG, some were study hall, and one student goes to SRTC. I then look at the high school, which ALT Ed is a part of. Mental health was bad pre-COVID, we knew it, but we have seen it ramped up especially after the pandemic was declared over. We have known that mental health of our youth is less than desirable. Frankly, it needs attention and an infinite amount of resources. But in the high school, we do have more than 39 kids who are also struggling with anxiety. We have more, more than 39 kids diagnosed with ADHD. We unfortunately have more than 39 kids who have experimented with self-harm, and really what I struggle with is we have more than 39 kids who have attempted suicide. We also have four, more than 39 kids who are struggling to stay in school.
So, along with the ALT Ed students, who I can deeply for, I think of all students in this, sorry, this is just in our high school. Our entire school district has students that are suffering. You know, no one gets a prize having the most mental health challenges. No one wins in this situation. So for me, it's about looking at the big picture. I'm talking about funding for services that help the entire student body. I can understand the concerns of duplicate services, and that we're charged with education, but if these mental health, thank you, if these mental health issues are not tackled also, that just, that disrupts our education system. No learning is happening. I think there are a couple solutions or ways to be creative, but I do think increasing access to social workers, being creative to our ALT Ed kids who will be impacted and feeling not supported, this calls for our school to help with that transition.
feeling not supported, this calls for our school to help with that transition for both students and parents. It will take an entire school, community, student body, and frankly, the city to help with the school of helping all students with whatever barriers they may have that cause them to not graduate or want to attend school and be proactive members of society. I am hopeful, and that's all I have, is hope. I see that support already happening in this very room. I'm so proud of you that came out. And lastly, I just want to say that I respect all my members and every opinion of yours, and we can agree to disagree. We will be supportive of each other. I expect nothing less. And again, I repeat that no one wins out of this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
If I can say one thing, I agree, I'd like to echo that I respect all of you very much. This is a very difficult, difficult situation that we're in, and I think, I think we're all just coming at it from not even different points of view, or we all want the same thing. We're all just trying to attack these issues from like, hey, well, maybe we should try this. Maybe we can do it this way. Maybe this way will work. But we're all saying, this is difficult, and we know we need to restructure because we've got nothing left, and just hope and pray that we don't get it kicked back to us and that we're asked for more cuts.
Paula, can I just ask first what the increased taxation and stuff is from Cheryl? Because I don't, I think we don't know that at this moment. And I did have one last little thing that I didn't tack on before, and I just wanted to leave everyone with something I tell my kids. Well, you focus on expanse, and that became obvious to me in this process. The kids that spoke about alt ed have been going to the counselors throughout most of their career and with the same results and the same, in crisis mode. And when we shifted their focus back on what was going, not what was going on wrong in their home, but we focused back on how they can be successful, how can they move forward in school, how can they get to the graduation? They can now come here and speak, and they have grown exponentially with their mental health, with their ability to do things they would not be able to do. So I just have to say, what you focus on expanse. And when all we focus on is their trauma, and all we focus on is sending them, having them go to the counselor and go to the counselor and go to the counselor, that's expanding. Their mental, that is, I feel like this is proof that if we focus, redirect these kids back into their education, they can be successful. But I'd like those numbers, too.
Can you do those numbers now?
Yeah, what we'll need is the number for the appropriations, but I think also the school committee would want to know what the taxation would be for expenses and taxation and what the appropriations would be.
So if I understand the motion correctly, it was adding alt back in, three social workers taken out, and one counseling receptionist taken out. So that actually adds an additional forty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars onto the tax, which brings us still, keeps us at the five point nine percent increase, and the taxation would be nine point six percent. So that would make the appropriation sixty-five thousand, sixty-five million, one hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred and sixty, five hundred and eighty dollars. So sixty-five, one four one, five eighty.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So Melissa's suggested option three. Is that currently, we're in full discussion right now? You accepted her motion.
We have to vote on it.
Yes, okay. I just wanted to be clear.
I would be remiss to say that although the number is not far off from our original proposal, I am not a betting person, but I will bet we will be back here, and we will be looking at other ESER positions or the alternative learning program. I just want the public to be very clear about that, because it is really just, at this point, a swap, and we can think it's a duplication of services. I don't actually disagree on that, but I can bet that we, looking at the ESER positions that we kept, we will be revisiting this. We will, if we decide to cut social workers today and put alt ed back in, everything still remains on the table after that.
Can I ask a clarifying question? There was a number that you threw out there that was forty-two thousand?
Forty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. That was adding in, that's making that change from the original, where we were as of Monday night.
Okay. Thank you.
Which was that sixty-five oh ninety-six hundred and ten? So you add in the forty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy, and that brings you to the sixty-five one forty-one five eighty.
I was an English major. So it just takes me a little bit. So, yes, moving forward, we're voting, and we're voting on Melissa's first, or we're voting on all of them? Melissa's. Okay. So we have a motion, and now I'm, do I say I'm just looking for votes?
All in favor. You got to say that.
I am a no.
So I say all in favor? Okay. So yes or no?
All in favor.
All in favor?
All against, all opposed?
All against, opposed.
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
I'd like to make a motion for option two, which is the budget with returning alt ed and removing the counseling receptionist for the appropriations for a budget vote of sixty-five million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight
I will second that motion.
So all in favor?
No discussion.
Discussion, sorry.
Again, I just want to say that I can get behind option two. We're coming right back to this. We will be in the, I can guarantee you, the city is going to look at eleven point one percent taxation and say, that's a no-go. We will be discussing all the ESER positions and alternative learning again.
Fundamentally, for me, I cannot get behind option two due to the fact that I don't believe that it points us in the direction of reinventing alternative education, echoing Emily's sentiments of servicing all students and broadening the scope of those services to all students. And that is truly where I feel like, at this point, I feel like we need to move towards that direction to be fair to the allocation of funds to all students, as she, sorry, as she shared, and as we see the mental health struggles with students continually who are not currently enrolled in the alt program. So for that reason, I cannot support option two as presented.
I would just like to say that I do agree with this number being too high, but I will not support, at this time, a budget that is getting rid of the alt program. So unless anybody else has any other options, that's where I stand.
I agree. I'm not, at this point, I can't, I can't agree to a budget that's cutting the alt ed. And I also agree with what Emily said, which is we will be right back here discussing these very same things and other positions and other areas of the budget again. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? All opposed?
Three, hold on, so three in favor, two opposed, and the two opposed were Emily and Jen.
So at this point?
Emily and Jen were opposed in favor, okay. Okay, and then the first one that opposed, failed, were out of that vote.
Can't wait for this.
Do you think it's just advantageous to just briefly inform the public what happened just now and what's being sent to the city on March 5th?
Can you bring up option two in the presentation, Beth? Okay, so what was approved by the school committee with a three to two vote is the budget that we will be sending to the city council. It'll have a total appropriations of sixty-five million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight. That's the number that the city council gets. So that's the number that will be going to them. What we did with that is that returned alternative education to the school budget. It removed the school counseling receptionist position from the budget. What that ended up with, from what we had talked about Monday evening, a net increase of that of two hundred and eighty-five thousand, seventy-eight dollars. So what that results in, that appropriation of sixty-five million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight is a six point three percent increase in expenses, three million, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-five, and the increase on taxation there would be eleven point one, one million, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. Just so people know, the first workshop with the city council, Tuesday, March 5th, at four o'clock, those will be recorded as well. Both the school and city are going to present their budgets initially in that first evening. The following Tuesday, March 12th, the school department, we will go deeper into our budget on March 12th. The school is assigned, really, March 12th is really when the city council is going to be really digging into the school budget. The following Tuesday, March 19th, at that workshop at four o'clock, the city will present their budget, and that's when the focus of the March 19th workshop will be. Also, on March 19th, Tuesday, there is a city council meeting that evening beginning at six o'clock, and that's when they have a public hearing on the budget. So it's an opportunity for people to be able to come back at that evening to be able to speak to the budget in general, that'd be both city and school, but from our standpoint, if there are people who want to talk about the school budget for or against in terms of that, that public hearing is on March 19th, and I would encourage all people to be able to do that for it. Then we have another workshop on March 26th, and that's when we'll continue to do that work, because the following Tuesday, April 2nd, is the city council taking the final vote. So we'll know more as we go through those workshops. I think what I anticipate, similar to what some of the other school committee members have said, is there may be other opportunities based on the direction that we get from the city council, that we still have some more work to do in our budget, possibly, and if so, we would be then scheduling the workshops to be able to come back and do that. So hopefully, that's what happened in terms of all that. Sound good? All right, I think we can move on to financials.
Yes. Cheryl is going to be discussing with us the January 2024 financials.
Good evening.
And just so people know, this has nothing to do with the budget. This is a carryover item from the other evening with that.
Waiting for her to pull it up. If you can go down to the dashboard, that one, yep.
And you have, this is in your, no, you didn't get handouts. I'm sorry.
So currently, we are about one point one million dollars below budget for the month of January, and currently, we are about running about four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars above last year, but we're within budget, so we're running great at this time. Then for revenue, we're running about three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars more than last year, and so that's pretty much subsidy for us, running up more than last year. Federal grants, yep, federal grants, we've taken in one point three million dollars in revenue, and we've had one point one million dollars worth of expenses, and so you can see the difference between those graphs. And then enterprise funds, which is our nutrition, performing arts center, adult education enrichment program, we've taken in one point four million dollars of revenue and one point five million dollars in expenses. Of course, that's the school nutrition, because we're already always running one month behind on revenue. ESER money, we've spent, we've gotten two million dollars worth of revenue and one point two million dollars worth of expenses, and that's due to billing prior year and the current year. And then other major grants, which is, biggest one for us is the REST grant. We have a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars worth of revenue so far and six hundred and eight thousand dollars in expense. We did receive over five hundred thousand dollars in February, so next month, you'll finally see that graph start to change, which is nice. Article one, which is our regular instruction, we're running about eighty-eight thousand dollars below budget, and we're running about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars above prior year, so everything's running according to plan. Article two, we're running about four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars below budget and sixty thousand dollars above prior, last year. So we're running right close to that. Career and Technical, which is our SRTC program, we're running about two hundred thousand below budget as of this moment, and we're running about one hundred and eleven thousand less than last year. That's due to our law enforcement is, was paid as an SRO and paid all upfront, and now we're paying him as a teacher, which now allocates him starting in September, so that's a change from the prior year. So we're fine in that. Article four, which is our pretty much athletics, we're running about twenty-two thousand dollars under budget, and we're running about thirty-six thousand dollars more than last year, so we're running right true to our budget for that one also. For article five, we're running about a hundred and thirty-four, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars above budget. Don't panic, because that's mostly due to timing. Beth bought a lot of stuff at the beginning of the year this year. So we're running about two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars above last year, but it's timing. Last year, we did a lot of our purchasing at the end of the year or towards the end of the year, and this year, we purchased a lot of stuff towards the beginning of the year and got ahead of schedule this year. So that's awesome. So I'm not concerned about that, because she's still under her budget for the year. Article six, we're running about twenty-four thousand dollars below budget, and we're running about thirty-six thousand dollars more than last year, so we're running within our budget there, too. more than last year, so we're running within our budget there, too. Article seven, which is our school administration, which includes all your front staff, all your front staff and your administrators, we're running about $9,000 under budget. I don't think we get that one much closer. And then about $19,000 more than last year. So that's all running true to form. Article eight, we're running about $84,000 below budget. I think we finally tipped it because last couple months, this one's been running a little higher. So we finally tipped and caught up to where we were last year in the timing of invoices. And so 41, $411,000 more than last year. So we're still, you could tell last year, they were behind in billing. Article nine, facilities management, we're there running about $356,000 below budget, $272,000 more than last year. That's mostly due to the Willard Building last year that we had to put money into to get that building running. So that's why we're running less than last year. Debt, we're $7,000 below budget and $86,000 less than last year. That's due to interest. And article 11, we're running about $12,000 below budget and $25,000 more than last year, and that's due to the change of moving the WSSR TV piece under this article, which wasn't there the prior. Adult education is running about $12,000 below budget, and they're running about $29,000 below last year. And that is the financials for January.
Thank you, Cheryl. Does anybody have any questions or anything for Cheryl?
Make a motion to accept Cheryl's budget. I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I make a, sorry, I make a motion to approve the January 2024 financials as presented.
Seconded? Discussion? All in favor? All in favor. Okay, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting at 10:12. I would like to say thank you to everybody who came today, who took time out of their work schedule and their class schedule and everything else. Much appreciated, thank you.
Seconded?
All in favor? All in favor.